I just wanted to let you know who all was up here tonight. We have Mayor Jeff Mason. We have another District Four Commissioner, Mr. Ron Schumay, another District Four Commissioner, Mr. Shannon Menchee. And I'm just gonna let each of these commissioners just tell you which district they're from, if they're from your district.
Yeah, Chairman, this is all.
Wow.
I'm District Five. My name's Colvin McKinnon. I was with the Lakers in August and kinda facing this battle headfirst. So, appreciate everybody taking the time to come out. It's an important issue. And there's a lot of stuff floating around that people are talking about that may not necessarily be the right way. So, we're gonna hopefully iron out some questions and concerns you guys have tonight.
Hello, I'm Shannon Green. I'm District One. I took over when Jason Powell resigned back in December, wasn't he, Mayor?
Yes.
He resigned. So, I took, I think it's February when I took over.
I represent the Iowa District, the Illinois District, the Mountain County District.
Freddie Kirby, District Two. I represent the Springs area, Riddle Town, Channel One, and all of that.
David Gross, State District, the Illinois District, the Mountain County District. Been serving since 2006 in the county commission.
So, this town ball tonight was originally intended for just District Four, but I know that there's a lot of people here from different districts. So, if one of these are your commissioners and you wanna talk to them afterwards, they'll be here. So, I'm gonna let Jeff Mason, Mayor Mason, get started.
All right. Well, again, thank you all for being here. Thank you to the commissioners that are here tonight and have come out to, to, to have a discussion with our citizens. There's nobody here in front of you tonight that wants to be here because of the situation we're in. We're glad to be able to interact with you and answer any questions you have. This is not the subject that I intended on would be in my first year, but it is the cards I was dealt. And we will go through how we got there. I guess I, first thing I wanna do is kinda tell you the timeline and how, how we come to this position and go from there. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. I took office September the fourth of last year. One of the first clues I had that maybe something was it, or one of the first head scratchers I had was is in one of our county building line items, we had a, we were already doing an amendment. And I said, why are we doing an amendment? Did we have something major break? And, and the answer was, no, we just, we amend that line every year. And when I went back and started researching past history of that one line of our county buildings, we had spent about $60,000 in the last three years, per year in that line. And it was only $25,000 in that line in the, in the budget. And that was kind of a, I just didn't understand that coming from a manufacturing backside, background. You, you, you spend what you spend. And, I mean, if it costs you $60,000, you put $60,000 in the budget 'cause you're not, you're not kidding anybody else. So, that was, that was the first thing. And then, long about October, I was on the phone with Mr. Ron Queen with the Comptroller's Office. And we were talking about something else. And Mr. Ron said, while I've got you on the phone, I'd like to talk to you about something. I said, okay. The comptroller wants to talk to you about something, you, you say, yes, sir. So, he said, these tax anticipation notes, and let me explain what a tax anticipation note for any of you that may not be here, because it's, it's not a complicated process. But basically, what you call a tax anticipation note is you're borrowing money at the beginning of the year against future revenues. So, if you've got, if you're anticipating, you know, a collection of a million dollars coming in, and that's just a number going out, and you'll have that money back, then you borrow a million dollars for, in July to get you through to October when your tax collections, the property taxes starts coming in. And then you pay that million dollars back before the end of the year. So, it's, it's, and in the past, we've been borrowing that money from our school debt service so that we didn't have to pay interest on it. Well, the school bond debt's paid off the 30th day of this month. And so, that money's not there to be borrowed anymore. So, the sad reality of this is, is when we have to borrow this money in July, we're gonna have to pay interest on it this year because there's no other fund to borrow from to kinda transfer. It's, that's a sad situation. But, back to that, he said, we really need to get you out of that process. He said, you know, you've been borrowing money at you like this for many, many years. And we really need to put you on a program that you get out of doing this, that when you do these things, you are considered financially stressed. And we look at, we monitor you on that basis that you are financially stressed. And anytime somebody says financially stressed, that's never a good thing. So, I knew right then that we were looking, we were going to have to do something with revenues to get it up. Because, basically, to get where we need to be to have enough money, and this number, it's, this is, this is an estimate, but it's the best way we can figure, is we need somewhere around two and a half million dollars fund balance when we close the books in June. So, that means there's two, two and a half million dollars there, which translates into, basically, it's kind of a half ratio. You've got a, you've got somewhere around a million and a half dollars in real cash in your checkbook. Your checkbook balance is one and a half million dollars. Your fund balance, which is paper, says you have two and a half million dollars. So, that's kinda how that rolls. And, and inside that balance, there's always, we have what we call reserves, that is money there that's set aside for, it's non, that you can't pull from or use, those things. But that's kinda where they're at. And that gets you that million and a half dollars that you need from July to October till you start collecting your tax revenues. So, that's, that's, that's one of the reasons we're in this situation today. So, so when you look back at our 2018 audit, and there's been lots of questions, has this been audited? Has this been audited? Yes, we face a state audit every year. So, I'd say problem number three came when our audit came back in October. When the budget was passed last year, it was, it was estimated going to be a 1.2 million dollar fund balance left at the end of this year. Well, when audit came back, they told us that there was a mathematical error done in figuring either Mayor June's expenses, which decreased that fund balance down to, I would believe it was $647,000 at that time. So, there was hit number three. So, again, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking, we've gotta do something. We gotta figure, you know, there's, there's something coming down the road, and it's not pretty. So, when we rolled into January, February of this year, halfway through our budget, and we did our revenue projections, we automatically looked and said, whoa, this is not right. This is, this is, this is not trending in the right direction. So, at that time, we kinda started backing off and, and really watching that. And then, rolled around to probably end of April, beginning of May, we, we know, we, we kinda noticed that, hey, this is, once we got those revenue figures for the past two or three months, hey, this is worse than we thought. And we've basically stopped spending this, in the last two months. I mean, outside of payroll and emergencies, I mean, Eugene, we've had to fix a few things, jail due to the fact that, you know, that, and we fixed a few things. But my maintenance guy came in today and was gonna buy a pen for a re-breaker at the, at the fairgrounds. It broke. And I signed his request, and I said, that probably's not gonna get spent, but, 'cause it was like $4.79. I said, I'll sign it. But I said, I'm sure budget finance, or financing budgets is going to stop that anyway. So, that's, that's where we're at. We've, we've actually, we have not been able, we've, we've took three ambulances out of service. We still have three. Every ambulance station is serviced, and we're good. But we've took three out due to the fact we, we combined supplies to keep three ambulances running until we get to July, when we get to borrow the money and replenish our supplies. And that was about the time when the budget started, started coming in, and we started working on it. And, and each, and I wanna, I wanna commend your commissioners, if they're, the ones that are here and ones that are not here. In the past three months, has it been three months? When we started, we started the first of April, somewhere in there, your commissioners, whether they were on budget finance or not, showed up and participated, which is the way government works. These guys are, you guys elect these people to be your voice in your district. And they've done a great job this year representing you and being there and hearing, hearing, hearing what's happening. And they came back and tried to explain to you the situation. And I wanna commend them for that. They've, they've done a great job. So, once, and with the revenues, the revenues projected this year for the ambulance service were somewhere around, were 1.450 million dollars. That's what we, what was estimated to be collected from the ambulance station. That's, that was not realistic. We are, we're gonna collect somewhere amount of, around a million dollars. That's where we're at this year. It's gonna be somewhere around a million dollars. And that's, that's a good year for the ambulance service because there's several, there's several factors that goes into your collections on that based on, basically what I've been told, is every time that ambulance leaves that building, it costs us $500. If you've got private insurance, chances are you're gonna get paid back most of that. When it goes down Medicare, Medicaid, 10care, those reimbursements get lower and lower. So, you don't, you never get, you never, you're never gonna make money at that. It's just, it's a service for, for communities. And so, that is something that we looked at. So, if you take that $450,000 that wasn't going to be received in revenue, and you remember the $647,000 I told you, puts us down to 200,000, basically. All right? And Eugene's here, and he'll, he'll back me up on this. State Prisoner Board this year was set at 77 prisoners. And that means we house 77 state prisoners at $39 a day and collect that revenue. And it's to pay the jail, pay the jail note, and stuff like that. Well, coming into the year, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Eugene, y'all told them last year you were at 65 and trending down. Is that, is that, would that be a true statement?
Sure.
That's what I thought. And then, when we called to get an updated number around the first of May, we were at 43. So, once we did those projections out and realized that we were gonna be about $350,000 short on those revenues. So, you remember, we had 4, 647, we knocked 450 off, we're down 200. So, now I'm looking at a negative 150, basically. It's where I'm at today. And that's based on if everything goes the way it's supposed to. And we've had, we've had other things that's popped up and that's, that's cost us money that we didn't, didn't realize was coming. And so, that, I think our bank, if, if everything goes the way it's supposed to, when we, when we end June 30th, we're estimated to be somewhere around $18,000 in the bank, as a county. That's, I, I've got nothing to hide. I, I mean, I won't tell you, this is-
What is the total income of property taxes for the county?
Oh, let me find that right quick for you.
Current?
Current, current property taxes.
Budget.
Regional budget, we've collected, we're, we're somewhere around, gonna be around 3.4 million dollars in property taxes.
For the year.
For the year. That's what we're gonna collect. And Ms. Leanne's here, and they do an awesome, they do an awesome job in getting that collected. So, I'll, if, if she wants to speak on that all.
That is your portion, Jeff.
Yeah.
She's got the school.
Correct. That's our 101 portion.
Yes.
Yeah. That, and what we call the 101 is our, is our operating budget. That intent, I've got that here. That's everything from county commission, board of equalization, county mayor, county attorney, election commission, Richard, all your county offices, building and maintenance, that's your fire department, your rescue squad, ambulance service, all the way down to special services. And that total budget, the total, this year's total expenditures in that budget is 10,719,310. That's what the budget is projected to spend this year. Now, that's down about a million dollars than last year. We've cut some stuff out of that. Some of it was stuff that never was, that didn't happen, that's never, that won't get put back in the budget. But we've also did, went through, again, all Brown County Commissioners, they cut their pay to, from $100 a meeting to 25. And that's all they make. And that's the state minimum you have to pay them, $25. So, we've, we've cut and got it down. And we stand today with revenue that we've gotta make up. Basically, we've gotta make up, we've, we've gotta, we've gotta flip $2 million. We need to collect a million dollars to make us whole in our budget. And then, if you remember about the conversation with Mr. Queen, I've gotta start, I've gotta start putting a savings account in place so that in three, hopefully within three years, I don't have to borrow the money to operate anymore. So, that's, it's a big increase. Listen, I like it. I gotta pay it. I wish there was a better way right now. And we'll get into that in a minute and how that went. But that's where I stand today. And, and, and again, so, that's, that's my, that's mine. So, I'll take any questions you may have for me.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know, I mean, I know on paper, you know, we see that the money's missing because of revenues and this, that, and the other.
Yes, ma'am.
But apparently, somewhere along the line, we had money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My question is, is there an investigation going on to find out where that money went?
I can tell you exactly.
Because it appears that somebody took the money.
I do not think there was money took. No, ma'am. Do, no, 100%. I do not believe there was money took. Don't know how you would take money. I mean, the fraud investigators would, would've found that quick. But, we, we spent a million, all right, going back to 2017, 18 budget, what I, I didn't tell you about the audit. The audit last year showed we spent a million dollars more than we collected. So, there was, that money that was there went away last year. So, that start, so that million dollars is gone because they, we spent more. And it was kinda the same thing last year. Revenues didn't meet the expectation. So, you spent, you didn't, you spent a million dollars more than you collected. Yes, ma'am?
Well, is there not someone over this that can foresee or watch for more money going out than what's coming in?
That's-
I mean, that, that doesn't make sense that you're allowed to spend more money than you've got coming in.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. We've, we've watched it this year. I cannot, this is my first year, my first term. I can't speak to what, how, what was in place last year. I know what, that, that they did their jobs as the way we're supposed to. I-
Well, if it is somebody getting, there's money gone, and nobody knows where it went, then they can't help it.
Well, the thing is, it's not really money, it's, it was never really money. It was, it was revenues that were projected that never, there was not a million dollars just laying there. It just, it never-
Who was doing the projection?
That's, that's the question I-
Everybody in this room pays their bills like the county pays their bills. And we all come up short at the end of the month. We bounce Texas. The county gonna come and help us out.
That's, that's a great question. I agree. I mean, it-
Wait, will you come write everybody if you're a jack?
I can't this, I can't this year. Erica kinda explained it better than, than I did in one of her Facebook posts. But basically, what, what, what it appears to, and I, and I like to break things down as simple as I can. We've said we make $100,000 a year. But we only make 70. But we've lived like we make 100. And we've ma, we've maxed out every one of our credit cards. That's where we're at today.
I've got, I've got stuff here. I've looked up online raises for people that works for the county.
Yes, sir.
$40,000 in two years. Raise from $33,000 to $72,000. Now, I've never had a raise like that, neither has anybody in here.
Correct.
What, what's that?
That was two years ago, a new department was set up. We, the county commission-
That's a big raise.
Yes, yes, sir. I agree. But it, it's a different, it's a different job title today, too.
I don't care what you're doing, that kind of raise.
You don't, you don't get raises like that.
No, sir. I don't.
And you're, you're the head going over the county. So, there's an issue right there.
I understand, understand what you're saying. Yes, sir.
It's a big issue.
I mean, y'all, the information y'all look up online, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. I've never had a raise like that.
Understand.
You can't do enough in any of these offices to make this kind of money.
Right. That night, that was presented with the previous mayor. Shannon.
I mean, I, 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 I mean, the information, you know, that's awful.
I mean, I'm tired of you. I mean, I come on, this is actually my third year. But I was at that meeting. And I think a little misrepresentation of it, because when they was talking about that change in position and the change in that job title, I'm about 99% sure it was stated it would not cost the county any more money, how it was presented to us.
Another study that was-
Am I, y'all remember that? Am I, is it me, David Gross? Yeah.
It's true.
That's coming from the previous mayor.
It's, right, but it had to be, I'm not. I mean, I mean, when you, when I worked for a county position up there, and Jimmy Norris turned in his yearly budget, there was, if he wanted more money, he was asked why.
Correct.
So, if that particular office had a expenditure, you know, extra expenses that were more than the previous year, did nobody ask why? Was it optimized that a new position was being, and that this person would give a $30,000 a year raise? Was it presented that way?
Yes, ma'am.
Someone asked, Shannon, you was at the meeting. Was it presented that way?
Steve, you was kinda, Steve was kind of a part of this and getting it, I mean, you, it, it affected your department more than, than, than anybody because it kinda took the, if you can, if you can talk to it.
I'm not gonna say that I was the largest fan of this. But C-TAS, which makes law, they want all-
No, Steve, they don't make law. They're, they're an advisor on law.
They're an advisor. They advise that all county offices consolidate together.
Yes.
And you have a financial director.
Yes.
I still have my secretaries. And I still have my budget. But I cannot spend my budget if this financial director doesn't let me have my purchase orders.
Absolutely.
It's like there's another set of eyes on my money besides me and my secretary.
Yes.
And I did, and I did. I went, ma'am.
It wasn't advertised, but this was a new position. I guess they just-
Oh, no, it had nothing to do with me.
But I'm like, I guess I'm asking, making it-
I still have my same secretary.
I understand what you're saying. I totally agree with you. And, but we were told, just like Shannon said, there wouldn't be no more costs to the county. And the former county mayor told all 24 commissioners that the person that he recommended and appointed to that position was the only one in the county that was qualified to hold that position. That's what we were told that night. If you pull the minute meetings back, I think I'm 99.9% sure that's the way it happened.
Now-
That's a shame.
And he owes the county an explanation.
That budget is not optimized.
Do what, sir?
I said, he owes the county an explanation.
I totally agree with that.
If we're gonna raise taxes, are we gonna wreck, you know, people, are we gonna get big raises like this?
Here's the way I, that, that I feel about, all county employees, especially this week, I've been in service training with a lot of the deputies, county employees are really getting hit hard. Their property taxes are going up, and they ain't had a pay raise. So, so they, so they're gonna be, they're actually gonna be making less than what they was last year.
They're winning the club.
Yeah.
The doctors all the same way, all the way.
Well, that's it.
Retired people, they'll get a raise.
I'm, I agree with you. I'm retired myself. I work part-time.
I'd like to know why property tax owner have to put a fee on all of them.
I'll tell you right now, I'll tell everybody in this room, I own two pieces of property. I'm not in favor of this property tax. I'd, I'd vote yes in a heartbeat on a wheel tax. But I can't vote for that much of a property tax. And what I've always said since I've been up there, if they would like on an even year, raise it two cents, the next year one cent, we could all live with that if it was just a slow progress. But when you go to doing like they tried to before, they added 23 cents, this year they want 59 cents, that's a hard pill to swallow. I'll tell you right now.
I'm, 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 I'm,
Then that fifty-nine cents is gonna be a dollar twenty. Or, or better. That's how, I mean.
And cuts.
And cuts, yes. And cut, they're gonna do cuts, mandated cuts, and raise your property taxes fifty, sixty cents. That's, we've asked that question, I've, we've had Mr. Queen on the phone two, three times and uh, we've asked him that question. Hey, what happens if we don't pass this budget? What, what hap, what's that look like? And every time I ask that question, he says, well, that's not gonna happen. We don't worry about it. Second time, I asked the same question, he said, well, that's not gonna happen. We're not gonna worry about it. Finally, I said, no, sir, you need to tell me what's going to happen. He said, well, we're gonna come in and we're gonna set a tax rate that's gonna be very uncomfortable. We're gonna make cuts. And we will make sure that nobody, nobody in elected a position from you all the way to the sheriff will never be reelected in this state, in this county. Because if you can't, if you sit back and don't do your job, then, and we have to fix it, you don't deserve to be there. That's kinda way, that was what he put it. So, yes, sir.
The gas tax that was mentioned by Steve here. I've noticed that a lot of county cars is going to pilot, Wilco Pescet gas, which we're paying. Gas taxes on that, a lot of filled up county cars. Wouldn't it be more feasible to have a contract with someone and get that lower gas tax?
Yes, sir.
Save some money right there?
Yes, sir.
Why is that not being done?
Do what? Alright, wait, let me answer you. You're exactly right. So let me, let me tell you, and, and everybody here will tell you the same thing. I have said this numerous times in budget finance meetings and, and if we're gonna sit here and ask our citizens to pay fifty-nine more cents in property tax, we cannot continue working the same way that Smith County's worked.
That's a good point.
We cannot do what we've been doing. So there is things that we're going to, that, there, what I have planned to do. And then one of those is buying our tanks and, and getting our own gas and, and a contract on that search. Where we, where Steve, Steve already has that. We may just partner with him on that, since he's already has a tank. But, we're going to do that. We're gonna look at how we maintenance our cars and if we can pull that inside and do it ourself again. Uh, I'm going, I'm going to myself. It will be outside the county, it won't be the county commissions. They won't have, they won't approve it. It will be my, what I'm calling fiscal oversight board. It's gonna be probably somewhere from seven to ten people in this county that are businessmen to normal, everyday citizens, based of accountants, bankers, people like that. And what they, what we're gonna do is we'll meet with them quarterly and show them our books. But we'll also give them opportunity to look at those books, make sure there's, we're, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And they will be able to ask those questions. They won't have any regulatory power, but they'll be able to, you know, if, if they wanna bring somebody else in besides me and ask questions about their department, they will have that ability. Like I said, there's no regulatory power with them. They will just make suggestions. I would report back to on the, to the county commission on what we learned during our fiscal review committee meeting. That's, that's two or three of the things that I, and then there's other things, there's, there's, there's another aspect of, of the centralized accounting that we went to, which in nineteen, is it called the nineteen fifty-seven acts? And it creates what, what you can create a centralized purchasing unit. So, we would take the purchase orders out of the department heads and elected officials. And basically you, it would, you would go back to the manufacturing days. You would turn in a request and that purchasing agent would take that request and go out for three bids, or they would have already worked a bid with somebody and they do the ordering. And that way, there's, it's, it's truly, it's tracked deep inside. Now, the problem with that, it's probably gonna create another position, so I'm not really in a position to pay another salary right now. Do what? No, she's, she's managing the books. We have a purchasing person that, that processes our POs and tracks all that through it. We have an accounts payable person that makes sure the bills are paid. And then we have what is basically the CFO that oversees everything.
Purchasing doesn't make bids?
That is done, the state says you have to take bids over anything over ten thousand dollars. If you're just buying anything else, then that's true, yes. Now, we have, we have bids and contracts with cer, with certain people on, on things.
Why can't your bids be lower than ten thousand dollars? Because us as homeowners, we bid out everything we do.
Correct.
So why can't?
Well, we've, that's brought up here a while back, that, that, that we would start bringing a lot of that stuff to, to more bids. Yeah, and if we do the centralized purchasing, then that person would be tasked with making, making sure everything we did had three bids with it.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
What have you got that you can liquidate that the county owns, whether it's property, real estate, or equipment? That you don't need, that you need to get rid of and bring some money in?
We've got two pieces of property right down here at Rome. It's right here where, uh, Steve, what, is that? Seventy, the little triangle right there. And they're, they're just little, it's a hole that.
In about, Dr. James Fisher.
Yeah, yeah, it's in.
Preacher circle, uh, goes around, gets very, Dr. James Fisher.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, that's, that's an, that's an auction that's coming. We do have a lot of surplus auction items in our gym that we will be auctioning off in the coming months. So we're, we're, we, you kinda do this once a year, so we've collected all the surplus stuff. And now we're about ready to do that auction and auction those off.
What about the Baker Farm in Gornsville that y'all bought for an industrial farm?
Yes, sir.
That's prime real estate.
Yes, sir.
Sell it.
We're trying to sell it every day.
I mean, sell it to someone that can develop it, and we need to get out and develop it.
Okay, that's something we can look at and then take into consideration.
That property not zoned for, uh, development, it's only industrial, that's correct.
Correct.
So why not zone it for industrial?
It, it. Residential? Because it was, it was bought. Right. Good point, good point. I mean, you could sell it to the private developer, get her money back. I mean, that's, it's valid points.
This is an absolute mess. You haven't figured that out yet. I got elected in August and, uh, the mayor thought so much of me to make me the rookie on budget finance. And, uh, we spent about sixty hours, um, in budget finance in the past two and a half months. And I have just been in awe of the mess that we're in. I never would've thought, coming into this in August, that we would've been in this mess. And, uh, moving forward, uh, I have requested that every month, every month, we receive, uh, reports on actual revenues. Budgets, we found out the hardware phony.
Pieces of paper.
Yeah.
Or projections.
So I requested actual revenue reports each month. Also, um, just like Jeff said, we can't continue to do business like we've been doing business. I've requested a list each month, every thirty days, of all transactions over two thousand dollars. We've gotta see where our money's going so that we can know, uh, where we can save. And, uh, I'm a big, big advocate of down the road, we can't just start day one and hire a new person. But, uh, that centralized purchasing needs to happen.
Yes, sir.
Because right now, we have all these different departments. You've got tax assessor, trustee, clerk, sheriff, roads, all these different departments. And let's just say, we'll just use copy paper, for, for example. They're buying copy paper from wherever they want to. You know, we could be buying copy paper by the tractor trailer load and get a bid on it and get one price. You know, um, that's one of my goals. Like I said, I, I served four years on the city council in Gornsville. And, uh, luckily, Gornsville's doing pretty good financially and we didn't have these problems. But I learned enough about a budget, uh, to know that, uh, no matter if times are good or times are bad, you still need to try to save as much money as possible because it's not our money.
No.
It's your money.
It's your money.
And, uh, uh, we've got to make precautions day one, because day one, we're not out of this mess.
No.
You know, July one, we're gonna borrow, what, a million dollars?
Million six.
A million six hundred thousand dollars just to.
Just to pay the bills.
You know, and we, uh, it scares me anytime I have to borrow money to do something. You know, we have to be very careful how we're spending that borrowed money especially. And, um, like he said, I think, um, we've been in these meetings, I think that this is gonna get us to where we can get out from one of those tax anticipation notes. Uh, it's gonna take some time.
What, what, what did you say that first day, Kobe? Tell them what you said that first.
I told him, I said, listen, boys, I said, if you're gonna sell me a property tax my first year being elected, then you better make sure it's gonna fix it. Because
We ain't giving back.
You're gonna get one property tax vote out of me, and that's it. Because I pay personal property tax on two businesses. Me and my wife, I'm young, me and my wife are building our first home, poured the footers two weeks ago. We'll never know what it's like not to pay these high property taxes. And, uh, something else I wanna touch on, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Some people are for, some people are against the wheel tax. Uh, we've got to look into it.
Absolutely.
We have two, two options. Either, um, move forward with putting a referendum in March. And then the other option is, we could move forward with putting it on by the county commission. Just the problem is, we don't have the, the timeframe. But we can still go ahead and put it on. But I will tell you this, I'm not a fan of double taxing.
No.
I'm not a fan of go ahead and putting that wheel tax on now. If we decide to do that by the county commission, and I hope some of my constituents are watching this and will reach out to me and tell me. But if we do that and put it on by two super majority readings or passes of the county commission, that we not start collecting until July first of the next budget year, when that time that we could project that revenue could then therein potentially repeal a portion of this property tax. Because I just want you guys to know, you know, we're sitting back here being quiet, but I am totally against it. But, you know, we've been slung into this headfirst, and Jeff has been trooper. Because you just imagine, being elected in a day one, it's been raining on him ever since. And, uh, it's an absolute mess.
It's okay.
But, uh, and anyway, I, that's all the nice things I'll say about Jeff, but, uh, but anyway, just commend you, Mayor, just like I said, he is putting up with this, the cards he's dealt. But just to reiterate, we can't continue to do business like we've been doing business. It's an absolute mess, and, uh, hopefully, we can smooth things out. But it's gonna take some, some, you dealers, I'm sorry. Yes.
How many people, did you say, high taxes in this county?
For, for property tax? Somewhere around sixty, how many people, how many tax parcels?
There are between twelve thousand and have got the list this year, but it'll be between twelve and thirteen thousand.
So how, how many, how many actual taxpayers? Uh, we've heard somewhere around sixty-five hundred is what the number's been thrown out. And like I said, Terry could answer that better than you.
What we bid every year is a tax roll. It's based off of what the assessor gives the state, okay? So on that roll, there are between twel- twelve thousand and thirteen thousand parcels. So I can't say how many people own those parcels, okay? Because you have, uh, big property owners that may own fifty pieces of property, then you have those people like me that own one.
But you can't say how many people pay taxes last year?
Uh.
So how many people pay taxes?
There was thirteen, between twelve and thirteen thousand parcels.
Okay.
Okay.
And how many people live in this county projected?
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand, six eighty.
Of course, we're looking at a new, uh,
Census.
Census, so we will get new figures on this. I just wanna say, uh, you know, my job is only to collect revenue. Okay, so, uh, I want you to make sure and realize that everything we have is balanced, to the penny. It is never projected, okay? It is to the penny. In, um, my twenty years of service at Smith County, we have never, ever had a shortage in the trustees office. I have fifteen years of budget, uh, excuse me, of audit reports with me tonight. I'll be glad to share those with you. I want you to realize, this, uh, is not something that we created. Uh, all I do is collect at ninety-eight point five percent. Uh, we collect it out of that eight million and something dollars in tax revenue. It is distributed daily when we make deposits to each revenue that it's supposed to hit. Uh, it was not a number that was just thrown out there. They are to the penny every day. Our bank balances are checked daily. We do not project those. They are
True.
To the penny. When I present a report to Mayor Mason at the end of each month, that, that balance is to the penny. I want to make sure you realize, this is not in your revenue.
Right.
As far as what is taken.
What is taken and, right. Yeah, the sheet says.
Revenue issue, it's a spending issue.
It's a spending issue. Um, it should be.
Yeah, I don't care if it's the county or the state collecting taxes, if you're not making any more money to cover it, where are they gonna get it from?
I agree.
I mean, everybody, I mean, even though you got a job, you're on a fixed income.
Yeah.
You know, people think, oh, fixed income, social security, that's not true. It's people with jobs.
I agree.
And it's not just, it's not just property tax, health insurance is through the damn roof.
Yeah, I agree. It's harder and harder to live every day.
Two hundred dollars. Oh, if I'm gonna turn sixty. I mean, it went from four hundred and sixty-six to six hundred and fifty-six for another reason, just, I guess, cause sixty. I mean, that's ridiculous. I, I gotta come up with two hundred extra dollars to keep myself insured for hospitalization insurance.
I'm gonna say y'all don't pay the more property taxes. I mean, you taxed us, you did tax us every year, you going up on it. Even, even during the downturn, two thousand eight, when the economy's going bust, y'all going up on taxes. And you ain't doing nothing for them. You're not doing anything to protect your home value. You got subdivisions, it's divided into lots with restrictions on them. You let people come in and put little baby vital houses on them. You never got property value.
Now, so one thing about subdivision. One thing.
Subdivision is supposed to be residential lots for houses to be built on. You got rezoned on farmland, seventy acres, lots, small lots, quarter acre lots, all of a sudden it's farmland. That's reducing somebody's property tax right there. And you wanna tax the rest of it? That's not right.
Are, are you the gentleman that sent the fax this week about that?
I did send it.
Okay. Alright, okay, good.
I was from one person.
Okay, that, Sonia's not here, but she went, that's not been rezoned for, for, uh, resident, for agriculture.
Charles on Tennessee, back online and look, it shows.
And our records doesn't show that, according to what she told me today. She went back and researched that. That property is now owned by one individual, because that was a future, future expansion of that subdivision that never did. And, and one thing about subdivision covenants, the county has no say in enforcing those. That's, that's between the, the subdivision, that, that builds the subdivision and the people that live there to police that. We don't police that.
The county approves the subdivision when they decide to build a subdivision.
Correct, the planning. Planning commission does.
Money, and you approve.
Yes, sir. But what's your.
That's all you do.
The restrictions, the.
You have no, no enforcement, nothing to protect, take the property.
No, sir. We don't, no, the county does, you don't, the government does.
Why do you bother approving it?
Because every property, because with zoning laws, they have to be approved.
Approve when it's built back there right now? The log structure and, and the ported john, and the tin, and abandoned car, can you approve that?
If you don't, if you can, like you said, we're kinda, if you'll come to my office, I'll get Sonia to come and, and, and everybody that's involved in this, and we'll explain. We, we'll talk about this in, in part, you know, on that, on a different day.
More fair tax than being a sales tax.
Right. I, I.
You tax everybody. You don't think it's a property tax.
We can only put three quarters more cents of sales tax back on. That's all we can get.
Make that work.
Right. Cause the state caps at it, at the local option.
Why didn't you take it off? I asked you, you had it, why didn't you take it off?
Because, because the, the ballot stated that once the school bond debt was paid, the taxes would be repealed.
That's right.
Didn't have a choice. They didn't have a choice at that time. It had to be took off.
But y'all voted for both of them to vote out. Why didn't it make a vote?
To see if they, to be able to, to see if the people wanted to keep it on and a portion, here you go, Mr. Rose, you were there.
The three quarter of percent sales tax, by law, if we collect that three quarters percent, fifty percent has to go to the school system.
Right.
The school system has a big surplus.
If it was still being collected fifty percent, if it would've, if it would've stayed on, fifty percent would forever have to continue to go.
Right. The three quarters percent is mandated by law that fifty percent has to go to the school. The schools has a big surplus. The county is broke.
Well, with that said, with that said, if you kept collecting that tax and it did go to the school, could the county not have reduced its contribution?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, you could pull, you could pull back, you're right, you could pull back property sales.
As for our property.
That was a mistake.
You gotta take it to the school.
That was a mistake.
You, you are correct.
If I remember correctly, that wheel tax and the sales tax, the way the referendum was written fifteen, twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, yeah.
Had to come off period. It could not keep going into, you couldn't spend it for anything else.
School bond debt.
It would be a hole somewhere.
Yeah, it'd stay there.
The only way you could get it out
Right.
Is to go to the state and ask for private aid.
Right.
The other thing that I think there's some confusion on, is the answer is thirteen thousand
Parcels.
And a nineteen thousand people in the county. Well, thirteen thousand property, property, statistically, there's, there is three point two people per house.
Right.
Per household. So, six thousand people are not paying property tax for twenty thousand people.
Right.
And the other thing I questioned, I don't know how the resolution is written, but once we get out of this hole as a county and we get our reserves built up, is it written in there that the property tax will be reduced?
No, sir.
Why not?
Because that property tax rate is set every year. They can reduce it at any minor.
But if, I know how to, if you don't put something in there that has to be reduced, it won't be reduced. It'll keep going up.
Right. Right, well, you, yeah, cause we're, we're reappraisal in two years, when everybody gets reappraised and there'll be a new value set. And at that point in time, yes, the, the, the property tax rate would probably go down at that time because
Keep making more money.
You can't, you can't, you can't raise taxes and, you can't raise taxes in a reappraisal year.
And I understand property taxes have to go into the general fund start with. A wheel tax should never go into the general operating fund of the county. It should be for special projects opportunities, like the judge, like school. It should not go into the general fund. That's my concern.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. Yes, sir, you.
I have lived in this county all my life.
You've been a public servant for many years, and thank you for that.
Thirty-two years, part-time affair. I've lived in this community all my life. This is the school I graduated from, started here in first grade, and it didn't have tenure. I've never seen anything like this. But Danny Ross, I think, just jarred my, jarred me.
Okay.
Sell the baker. Good idea. We can get three or four million dollars out of that problem. And, and we're stuck in quicksand. Gotta pull ourselves back out.
Yes, sir.
You know what? I appreciate this area, and Mr. Ron, and Shannon, or whoever put this meeting together, and everybody that's here. Thank you for doing it. I've not seen this before either. But my question is.
I think we're in a different world today.
For the future. Don't sell the baker property. Let's get some industry in here.
Thank you. I was gonna go back to that. You're right.
You know what? And, and for, ever since I can remember, we, my mind opened back up, brought in a lot of revenue.
It did.
This and that, but where's, Wilson County's growing, the Lapes and.
It is, it is.
Hudson County is exploding.
Absolutely.
Where are we? Stuck in the middle.
Right. It's coming. It, we, we, we've gotta do the thing.
My question is, we gotta get out of this quicksand.
Yes, sir.
And then where are we going?
We're gonna.
That's what I.
Well, we have valuable resources right here, like you just said. If we develop, if we go ahead and develop out that, that property and we get the right manufacturers in here, it's gonna create the right jobs, not warehouse jobs, not stuff like, but real good manufacturing, high pay, high tech jobs. That's gonna create revenue, cause you're gonna get revenue off the building and the equipment. A, a warehouse doesn't pay you any. So we have to be very selective about the people we come in here. Also, we have an exit right there that's not being developed. We have to do all we can. And that's what I wanted to do this first year, was get working on that. I, this is, this has slowed my progress down for that. But once we get through this, whatever is decided that the county commission decides to do and hands us, I have to go be the biggest salesman for Smith County and get more developments here. And that's, that's my goal and my, is, is the oversight, the new level of oversight and dev, and bringing the economic development this time, this city. We've also, some of the things that we've kicked around to help offset some of those property taxes is, the county doesn't have a hotel, motel occupancy tax. So we're, we're researching that. We get hundreds and hundreds of people in this county every Saturday and Sunday at our river. We're not gaining a dollar of revenue off of it. We've got to figure out how to get revenue off that. We're researching it. We're, we're, we're looking five, ten, fifteen, to figure out what we can do to, to set us up.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's the direction we need to go.
On the, the advocacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and fairgrounds, that kind of.
Yes, ma'am.
Who oversees pulling in people to get that? I don't know if any of you all have been down to Wilson County today and saw how many motorcycles, the BMJ, you're having a, a meat down there.
You're absolutely right.
There's all kinds of people down there. I saw them all over the land.
Absolutely.
We need to advertise to get people to come to Smith County. And have the things like that. We use it for seniors, whatever. Most of it, I think, is more or less nonprofit stuff.
It is.
We need to get out there, somebody needs to be advertising this, get it out there and bring these people in so they're eating at our restaurants. They're buying our gasoline. They're spending their, their money at the grocery store because those people are camping out down there getting tents. You know, they got a good.
That's right.
So, I mean, is anybody doing anything about that?
We're, we're, yes, ma'am. We're going, and it will, I, just like I told him, that's going to be my focus from going forward.
So that's wasted land, and it's sitting there with nothing on it.
Right. We get the fair coming in, in a couple of weeks, which brings us, you know, more people into our county and, and stuff like that. So, anything that we can draw, do to draw people here on the weekends or through the week, uh, you know, Erica has a business in Carthage. And, and anytime that we can draw people to downtown or anything we got here, it, maybe, maybe they look around one day and go, hey, I'd like to live here. And they come and, and they do those things. So, that's what we gotta do, you know, and it was, it was discussed about an impact fee that was brought out. I'm, I'm not, I'm opposed to an impact fee because you can't judge that revenue. So you, but you're, you're guessing on that every year because you don't know at that point in time how many houses are gonna be built or structures. But if we make it easier to come here and build a house, then we capture that new property tax money forever. So, I, and business always, I didn't wanna sell you one time and make a, make a big lick. I wanted to be your, I want you to be my customer forever because it's guaranteed revenue every year.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, first of all, I appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
Is there a way to write the property tax, and it looks like we're gonna have to have it whether we want it or not, and I do understand that. Is there a way to write it that is only good for one year or two years, and then it is rescinded and has to be redone after that time? It's not, in perpetuity, fifty-nine cents. It's only for a specific amount of time. And then you have to go back and revisit, go back to whatever it is today, and then see how much you need going forward. That way, I think more people could swallow it a little better. Um, saying it in the nice, southern way we should. Um, I know I would personally rather think of it as only being a one year or two year fix with something better coming in that third year. I, I can take that much better than thinking I'm going to be paying this in perpetuity.
Right. I understand. Yeah, that's a great, 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 we'll, I'll, I'll, that's a question for the attorneys. That's a law question, and I will, I will find that question out for you.
Can I add another question, Mr. Mason?
Yes, you can.
Uh, that will also show, and that's a great point, that could also show what kinda job y'all gonna do
That's right.
For the county for two years.
That's right.
Y'all, do what y'all say you're gonna do.
Right.
Then that increase is gonna be there, so when we come back to the table, maybe it'd be, maybe half.
I know, also, when I'm broke, I'm not giving charities money.
Okay.
Y'all are broke, y'all give charities money.
It's not passed yet, and I, and I, I don't think it'll pass this year. I really don't think that's gonna be part of the budget.
It's hard when you're giving away, you're taking.
I'm, I, I agree, I one hundred percent agree with you. One hundred percent agree with you.
And give an engineer ten thousand dollars for a project that pays the budget.
I, I agree with you as well. Um, it's just something that we've done in the past. It's not something I, I am all for charities, and the ones that are on these lists are great charities. I don't believe in take, it's a, I've explained it as a good thing done in a bad way.
Absolutely.
I can't possibly ask you to pay more money when I'm just taking money and handing it to another charity. They do bring value to the community, and there is that, that, that argument is valid.
It is.
It's just when you get down into picking and choosing which charities, which ones present, which ones don't, that's where it kinda feels icky, right? So that is something that will probably change this year. Uh, there's a lot of things that will change. And the biggest thing that I think is going to change is transparency. I think that having these meetings, um, not that we're in a good situ, we're in a bad situation. But the good from it is that you're getting, you're hearing about it. Cause we've been in a bad situation for a while and you've never heard about it. This didn't happen overnight. This didn't happen overnight. This is something that has been kind of known. It just hasn't been brought out there. And you all here know about this situation. We know about this situation. We're being very forthcoming with you about it. Um, I think one thing that we had.
It will continue.
And that will continue, yes. Um, one thing that I, I think Mayor Mason said that we could possibly post on the, um, the county's website is just budgets as they come in, those quarterly reports. You know, what we see, you can see.
Right. I mean, if, if you think about it, we're a, if you total up that whole budget, we're fifty-seven million dollars. Because, and a lot of that's not our tax money. That's federal money. Oh, it's our tax money. It's not Smith County collected tax money. It's federal tax money, state tax money. So, to break that down on the business side, you guys are our investors. You are our stockholders. So, we owe you a prospectus to show you how we're doing and how we're spending your money and where we're at. So, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem. Someone came to my office the other day and was, you know, well, you know, Channel Four is going to come and investigate this. And you know what I said? Bring them on. I have nothing to hide. I will answer any question you got. If I don't got an answer tonight, give me your phone number and I'll call you tomorrow when I get an answer. Or give me a day or two to get an answer. I, I have no. Mr. Steve?
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What would the property tax rate increase be if we did have a wheel tax? How much would it be then? Would it be lower?
Depends on what, could you stomach a hundred dollar wheel tax?
I could stomach a fifty dollar wheel tax. I'm paying property tax too, but that would also get the people that aren't paying taxed.
Right.
Seventy-five dollars wheel tax and bring a hundred. I'll be at one point.
Well, fifty bring nine hundred thousand dollars.
It's nine, it's a right at nine hundred thou-, I think, I ran the numbers the other day. It's right at nine hundred and eight thousand dollars for a fifty dollar wheel tax. So, that would be your, yeah, your.
One point five is seventy-five.
Yeah. One point four, one point five, right.
That would be from now on plus whatever property tax is put out every year, right?
Correct.
Should have an ending point. Wheel tax.
I'm not asking how long it's gonna be. I want to know what the property tax increase is going to be. I don't care how long you have it.
One point four.
It depends how high you own your property tax, you know.
Depends on how you.
I said fifty dollars. And then that brings in nine hundred thousand. So, it'd be, you divide nine hundred thousand by your fee rate, which is thirty-eight thousand.
Probably, probably about twenty cents. I think I looked on that.
We've looked, yeah, it's somewhere around, somewhere between twenty. Yes, sir.
Maybe fifty dollars, hundred twenty cents on it.
Yes, sir.
We went to a hundred dollars like you're saying.
It would near, we would still have to do a small one.
Nineteen, nineteen cents.
Right. Because, right.
How long would that wheel tax have to stay on the books in the good?
Well, the good thing about the property, still got to get to the point with, with, here's what, here's the, my, and I don't, we, we can cut budgets and I'll do whatever they, these guys pass, I'll work with it. But the state is breathing down my neck to quit borrowing money. So, that's.
How long would it take to make it right? We have to do that.
We think three years.
So, a wheel tax for three years?
But wait a minute.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, that mu-, all right, so, just because we get three years down the road, don't mean we can take everything back because we, we'd be right back in the same situation.
The question was, how long do you need?
How long do we need?
Yes.
I can't tell.
You said three years.
I would have to do some serious projections out to where we can maintain.
What I'm saying is if we get an ending point, an end game.
Yeah. You're, you're.
Then we can say, okay, in three years, instead of being a hundred, we're going to go down to.
Kind of, kind of what she said about the property tax.
Going down to fifty dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
And because I mean, by three years at a hundred dollars and nineteen cent increase, we should have pretty good money to bank.
We should. We really should. And then we, then it's on us to manage that money and make sure we, I never, and if I'm here four years or twenty, I never want to be in this situation again. I want to stop it and cut it off at the path.
Hey, borrow money. Do you have to borrow, borrow that money from your school? That's part of the, who's out there?
They, we asked that, we asked that question, we asked that question to the comptroller and they highly discouraged it.
What was the question?
Could we borrow that money from the school system who has a fund balance? And they highly discouraged that because you never know what's going to happen with your schools. And if you, if they call that note in because of something happening in schools, it would be a bad situation. So, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Is this an expense to the county for borrowing that money? Because that's something you have to project. That's an additional expense by borrowing. So, if we get the surplus, that's money we won't be spending. What are we spending right now for our money?
Right now, we haven't spent anything because, but going forward, you, I can, I'll know more tomorrow because we have a bid opening on that note. I can tell you exactly what that, what the, what the lowest interest rate will be and we can calculate that out and I can tell you.
You're guessing. Maybe you just had to say.
We, we, we're predicting somewhere around forty-five thousand dollars, which is basically a penny.
And that's borrowing from July one until we collect the real estate tax.
That's, yeah, that's paying it back, that's paying it back next year somewhere in June.
So, about forty-five thousand dollars to get us.
Yes, ma'am. We, we're guessing somewhere around three percent. That's our guess. And then we may open the bid somewhere in there five and that makes it seventy-five thousand dollars. So.
But I think that's something you have to budget in.
Absolutely.
We have to spend that money that we don't already have.
Right. Exact, well, what that does, you can, you, if, if you put it in and, and right, like I said, our budget right now shows us being on paper, nine hundred thousand to the good this year. Well, what you've got to remember is we've, we've wrote a lot of, we've, we've bought stuff this year that, this month that we had to have that's not been paid yet. So.
That's going to come out next year's budget.
Yes, ma'am. That money, it comes out of your checkbook balance. That's right. Yeah.
Borrowed a credit basically.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's true. That is a true statement and.
Far left, yeah.
Far, yeah. Ms. Dawn, I'll go return and you back to you, Mr. Ray.
Okay, you were talking about burning any businesses? Are you talking factories, uh, employees? I mean.
We're open for business.
Okay, how much taxes are we getting from factories? Is there any way that you can help with this? What's going on with?
Their ta-, their property tax and their property tax and their equipment tax will go up when property tax, yes, ma'am. Yeah, they, they own property and, and just like, just like all of us that they.
They also pay payroll taxes.
They pay, right.
They're paying taxes for us. Everybody hires.
Yeah, they're paying a, yeah, they're paying a portion of that. And they're providing a job.
They pay a DDB.
Yes, sir, Ms. John, you were saying.
All right, how much land does county, I don't think we could fail that we really don't need.
Okay, you're.
And up range. All the equipment we buy, while we buy, it won't be leasing. They're coming in there for two years to get a new piece of equipment. We wouldn't have all this painting and stuff, like the county man's guy and stuff. And, um, yeah, mine. And like he said, like falling, falling it up and trash, uh, like the little small acres or half acre, the taxes off the beds in our mind. You know, they too small crack in our mind in the county. I got a house right towards me. I'd buy it tomorrow and cash money. It's felting. And I could get a dirty thing done back this year.
Okay. Have you talked to Sonia to plan it off?
Yeah, I've talked to her. It's just like me talking.
There's a, there's a, yeah, there's a process. It, it, and there's a process that has to be going. I, I, I didn't set the process up, but I, I'll follow it, but it's.
You're cheating me and down on the road the day you do, hell.
Yes, sir.
Y'all hear me, Gage? I just want y'all to know that my department, since I've had a job, I'm gonna be not missing any. I want to defend it. I've been in budget ten years in a row. I bid my gas. I leased my equipment. There's so much stuff you are talking about that I already do. And I finish in this year with two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The way your road system got fixed eighteen years ago, that wheel sticker was at the highway department. They took it away, gave it to the schools. That's why your infrastructure looks like it does. I got to pay property taxes myself. I got to do just like y'all. Whatever happens, happens. But our next problem, and I'm going to be the one to say it, we got to do something about this infrastructure, y'all.
Absolutely.
I'm going to be the next man y'all going to be down on. Y'all down on me now probably. But I can only do thirty miles a year. If that's all I can do, it's all I can do. But the way those roads got fixed, we had that, that wheel sticker.
Yeah, but see, I go by your place every day. I love you a long time. You do a darn good job.
Well, I appreciate your service. I appreciate it.
You got a bunch of junk over there. You had junk for several years. I threw duck hooks, three different western stars and a couple of tractor stuff. Why ain't we got to a bit better than that? Well, but here during no pickup truck, I want to drive a cartridge farm that you drive down the road. I hate being there.
I put the money on the road and do the best I can.
Well, I know, but you know, and it's stuff and, you know, and equipment, like the land building, cattle, bear equipment. Our turn, four hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars. We can get gone there. We can get other equipment and a whole lot you from that yellow with a cat name on it. I've been.
I got John Deere. I have John Deere.
Oh, that's bid, Ms. Johnny. That's bid it in the.
Well, the bid, I've been using duck hooks. They did it. All people don't know me. I'm not a senator. I did it. Look, I didn't go out here and buy a truck. I went and bought a peddler truck. It don't have to have a keel on it. It didn't have to have Volvo. I got a truck to do the job. And these beds, somebody. Now, anybody else don't know about cattle, you just hate it. Cattle feathers have a darn piece of equipment to make it. If you don't wait, you get on the website, check them out. Kabota, gone there. Volvo, equipment is cheaper.
I just want y'all to know that I bid all my things.
Yeah, we, and all that's bid, yeah, I mean.
How much do you have to go and buy and, and look at materials for our asphalt plant and the sweet time? How much tape do we have to get off that? We get anything off that range?
You got that number?
So, late, uh, failed?
We don't have that number. She can pull it. We don't have a list of what everybody pays, but she can, if you'll come to her office, she can, she can get that for you. We don't have it with us now. She can get that for you.
Or you can go online. You can go to the city county trustee, you can pull up, uh, the ZEAM, um, and you can look at all the parcels that are taxed, okay? Uh, it is online for everyone to see. Uh, I do want to say like Steve, I'm only one department. I can tell you and I think a lot of commissioners are sitting here. My budget is shoestring. I do bid everything. I've only had two computer systems since I have been there. Um, so in twenty years, I got computers first in two thousand. I bided them out. Then we only have a couple of companies that we can choose from. Seven or eight years ago, I went and bid and got the lowest company to come in and replace my computers. When y'all talk about paper, also want to make this clear, we buy through a, an agreement with Mid Tennessee Office Equipment that the county mayor's office, uh, finance. We get a cheaper rate because we do go through them. And they do give us a cheaper rate on our copy. And I agree with Central on purchasing. I think that needs to be done. Erica asked me to speak on a couple of things and I don't know if she wants me to do this now. Uh, we do have three programs that I want to talk about. Um, we made it about fifteen years ago where when you have a tax increase or whatever in your home, if you had, say you had emergency crisis, uh, you had to come in and you had to pay your taxes in full in one month's time. I had to go to comptroller and I had to say, look, can we do this where I can give the citizens of Smith County a payment plan? And they said, okay, submit your plan. So, our plan right now is that you can do, when you get your tax bill in October, whatever that bill is, you can come in. I'd rather you do it in person because we don't have the money to mail your receipt, okay? So, what we ask you to do is to bring that payment into the office, whether you want to pay a quarter of your taxes in the month of October. Come in and do that. If you want to come back the next month and pay another quarter, or if you want to pay it in the fifth. However you want to do it, we want you to receive. So, we do have a payment plan to where you're not hit all in one month's time. A lot of people do not want to do that. I understand that. We do have a tax relief program, which is a state-based program. Um, the requirements for this program are that you have to be sixty-five or older or permanently disabled. And I'm basing this off of last year's figures, okay? So, last year's income, you could not exceed twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy. That's twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars per year uh, in two thousand and eighteen calendar year. And that's all persons on the date. So, if you have your children on the date, you do have to count their income. If you do not have your, your children on the date, um, you have a lot to save. You do not have to count your children's income if they do not live with you. Okay, so the requirements are that you have to bring your income, proof of income in, uh, every year, requalify for that program just by bringing your income in. We in Smith County also match that at this time. Now, I asked Mayor Mason, is this subject to change based on the tax rate? It could be because it's costing us about fifty thousand dollars in, uh, credits to people for low-income property tax relief. So, there's a possibility that could be cut. Uh, I hope not because it is helping a lot of low-income people, but we got to do what we got to do. Okay, and then we have, um, a program also for disabled veterans and widows, uh, veterans. Um, the state of Tennessee will pay on homeowner full market value up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We do not qualify veterans. If you feel you would qualify under this program, you have to come in, bring, uh, your VA number with you or we can use your social security number. We submit that to the state of Tennessee. They qualify you. If they qualify you, uh, they will pay, this past year, it was around, uh, six hundred dollars on your property taxes. So, if you feel you qualify for that veterans program or you're, you had a spouse that was killed in war time, you have not remarried, you would qualify. We also, and I don't even know if you want to bring this out tonight with this tax rate, we have a tax freeze program. Now, where this is going to benefit people in the past that have signed up for that freeze, if you're on that low income assistance, your taxes will not increase this year. Uh, when this was put in place, the state of Tennessee made it sound like everybody over sixty-five was going to get their taxes decreased. Well, they came back and they said, no, this has to have an income limit. So, last year's income limit was thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy. I don't know that the tax freeze program is going to be beneficial this year to anybody coming on new because you do not want to be frozen at a higher rate. So, we have to look at that, okay? Y'all have any questions about tax relief or tax freeze?
How do I know that, oh, if you weren't here, but I'm telling you that? Do you furnish that in any way?
We do. Uh, we publish that in the paper every year, Eugene. And we also, it is on the tax notice.
It is?
It is on the tax notice, on the ballot.
That I get?
Yes, it is.
You don't, you don't qualify.
Okay. Uh, there is another thing that's on the table that I've been recommending for years and I couldn't get anywhere with it. I said, you know, in Macon County and in other counties that surround us, if you pay in October, in those counties, you get a two percent discount for paying early. Uh, the new mayor and the commission are looking at that.
It's, it will be voted on that night.
If you, uh, if you get that passed, it would be if you paid in October, you'd get a two percent discount. If you paid in November, you would get a one percent discount. It's, it's how it normally works. So, we're doing everything we can. I'm here to help. I will do anything I can to help you. If you got questions, I'll be glad to help you. With, with anything to do with revenue coming in. Now, when it goes out, all I do is move money, okay?
Right. You're the.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, by paying it early, you will essentially be paying off our debt faster. Which would be saving us money, right?
It would get us cash quicker. Yes, we could, yes. It would help us get that, we might come down on some of that interest and not pay that full amount of interest if we can get the money in, yes.
I also have to bid my camps, okay? So, we get interest off of your money. And so, that helps too. If we collect property taxes earlier, we can bank off of that.
If I understood what you said, uh, if these payment options incrementally, it's not open for everyone.
No.
Like hypothetical terms, uh. If you're healthy and you're not over sixty-five, and there's just anyone in the house that would choose to pay your taxes each, each month.
You can do that.
If you're having to be hammered in one payment at the end of fiscal year, if you will, uh, is that open, is that open right now?
That is open to anybody at this point. Even if you're delinquent on property taxes, say that you have not paid your two thousand and eighteen. You have until March, the last day of March in my office, before they're turned over to the clerk and master, you can come in and do those in partial payments.
I know that a lot of folks, uh, wouldn't be able to do that, uh, but most of us older folks would probably consider an option like that.
We have a lot of people already utilizing that. Uh, I have a lot of people that just so appreciate it, that are on fixed incomes, that come in and pay a hundred dollars a month. You know, it does take it off.
Let me say one thing. I'll, I'll pledge those that know me, you know, don't get me started. But my wife, you know, my shins take bruises all the time. My wife picked me and others all the time. So, she's in this credit, she's in seven right over here. But, um, I'm having a senior moment.
Your time. I have those all the time.
I'll, I'll tell her.
You, you got a direct line. Do what? That little spot right down there, that little hole in, that, that's the outside of that industrial property that we want to bring businesses in. We own, now, we do own a piece of property down there on Kinsella Lane that floods. We cannot sell it. We, it was, it was part of a federal program where they took that money back and, uh, uh, you can't sell it because it's in a flood zone. Uh, we own Lock Seven. It's, well, we don't even own Lock Seven. It's, the Corps of Engineers owns it. We just, they, they basically turned that over to us. Uh, we don't even own Crump Parish Ballpark. We don't even own Crump Parish Ballpark, the school board owns it.
Mayor, you've got a special election coming up in Gordonsville in August.
Yes, sir.
I think maybe the card that you might be looking at the same.
They are.
For property taxing, or not property taxing, estate taxing. Is there any way that we could get this on a referendum, on fast track, and maybe the county have a big election in August this year?
Possible, yes. Yeah, I mean, anything's possible, but again, that's a penny, a penny of property taxes is going to pay for that election.
You said it's forty-five thousand dollars around election?
Thirty to forty thousand dollars, yeah.
So you got to say it, does that work?
That's, it's a gamble. What if it don't pass? What if, what if, what if, that's the gamble we face today. I'm with you, I want to go wheel tax, I want to send it, you know, referendum, but in the back of my mind, I have to be looking, what if it doesn't pass?
Then why don't you guys wait and vote on it? Like you said, it's a majority, and then if we get together to say, "We don't want it," then we haven't lost anything. Didn't talk to anybody do that?
We can do that, and then, it's, okay.
But if, we couldn't do it in elected, fix the problem this year, we can start it in July first.
Why couldn't you start it now?
Because he explained earlier, it has to pass at two meetings. And regularly, regularly stated meetings.
Regularly scheduled.
Yeah, regularly scheduled, we can't just call a special call one day.
I got that.
So June, and then when, what's the date?
The next one is in July, so you, you've got two back-to-back, you can do that.
Okay, so then we start August?
Then, then the thirty-day window starts.
September?
If it's petitioned, by that time.
There's a big if there, right?
Correct.
If it's not, you start looking in September, right?
We're gambling, that's gambling.
But there's a good chance it'll get petitioned.
Well, if you don't gamble, we're going to lose.
Because we can't, then that means that we would not have time to come back and pass a budget by the cutoff point of August thirty-first.
Right.
That's the cutoff point in the state, when the controller comes in.
No, I'm just saying, if it doesn't make any sense, what do you do, lost? You're still going to raise the property tax.
What we're lost is, we've got to have a budget passed.
Right, yeah, but I see what you're saying, go ahead, pass the budget with the fifty-nine cent property tax increase, and then roll the dice, and if we don't, yeah, yeah. You're right, I'm with it.
Hey, we repeal part of that property tax, we got this handled here.
I agree with that, but I, I thought you meant just go with that and forget the property tax.
Yeah. Yes, sir, Mr. Kirby.
I just thought about what I was saying now, before Smith County, until before it started. I think, and it all started with the comment that Cody made earlier, and the comments that these ladies and gentlemen have made over here, if they can have some kind of written graduated projection that we could notify this gradually in a certain length of time, and this way you'll hear the issue in thirty, whatever you have to do. You might, we might sell this town to one or two of you.
Okay, I'm, I mean, that's, that's why we come here tonight, for, for, to hear you, and you're, you're, I mean, granted, we've, what'd you say, sixty hours, and?
Let me ask you this, Jeff, to what he's saying, if we go ahead and pass the property tax, could we repeal it?
In mid-year, that's a question?
That, that would be the thing, that, that would be the question, is.
I don't think so.
That's, that was my question.
I don't think so, Steve, I don't, I'll find that answer, but I don't think so, because I think when you certify that property tax rate in June or whenever, it is valid till?
You could increase or decrease it either way.
Until the next.
Until the next year, you might be able to.
You cannot. We have to send that in certified, once the tax rate is set, I get a sheet from the State of Tennessee Controller's Office that I have to sign off on, the county mayor has to sign off on. It sets the tax rate in place, because what happens is, the tax roll has to come from the assessor's office, and it has to go from the State of Tennessee, it has to be pulled onto a file to be printed, for bills to go out by October first. So it does have to be certified, and it cannot be changed once.
For a year, for, for, for one year.
One year.
Every year is a new tax year.
You're not certified on tax rate until I sign off on it, and the county mayor signs off on it, and the assessor, I usually have all three signatures.
And, and, and you're right, exactly, so.
That was a good thought, though.
Yeah.
How, how are we even there for many?
It, it's a good, yeah, I mean, and you see that's.
That's what we need.
Well, another thought would be, don't raise the property tax fifty-nine cents, say, "We're going to guarantee we get this hundred-dollar thing, if it doesn't go through, you know, it's still the same point for one year," so I mean, it's not really, we're fixed.
No, if you don't pass the property tax and, and you gamble on that wheel tax, you're, you're, you're in a bind, absolutely, absolutely, and that's, so, you know. At that point in time, if you go to that special referendum, and, and you pass the wheel tax, or it doesn't pass, then you, then you come back next year and, and, and maybe you don't start collecting the wheel tax till next year, so you don't get double taxed. You set that wheel tax up that it will start being collected as soon as that property tax drops back off.
Mayor, so now can we get that in writing?
Sure. I'm not going to sign it, I'll, I'll say, if I can get it right, yes, I'm not, you know, but, yeah.
Steve, once I go back.
It's a, it's a promise I'd be scared of.
When we talk about the wheel tax, Cliff says she, her computers are not set up at this moment to collect a wheel tax, and she'll have to get.
They're already collecting a wheel tax.
I mean, a higher wheel tax. She would have to get her office and computers prepared to collect a higher wheel tax. When we talk about the tax increase, if you do that, you shouldn't get like the answer, you can't do it.
Yeah, that's.
The same way with a salary, if somebody's got a salary set, you cannot cut a salary in the middle of the budget.
Have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Flair.
Technically, you said there was one program with a cost in the county fifty thousand dollars, or a budget fifty thousand, and then I know Ms. Erica's adamantly against charitable contributions, which is based on another tab, that's two cents of the property tax.
That's right, it's gone.
So maybe fifty cents instead of fifty-nine.
Is this fifty-nine cent a hundred or about?
It's a, a hundred.
Okay, so you're asking what the property tax relief program for Smith County?
Now, I'm saying, if you're setting one of, one of the programs.
Costing fifty thousand dollars.
That is a tax relief program.
The charitable contributions is costing the county about one cent property. Both of them together is two cents, so we're just making pictures of it.
Great thought.
If you want to cut out that program.
If we cut out the program, do you think we would collect any taxes from those people? And what percentage of those taxes is the fifty thousand?
A very small percentage actually gets tax relief, I think we have like four hundred and something average.
Is tax relief a hundred percent, or that's just a?
No.
Yeah, so, you could cut that out, but then you could potentially be cutting out the regular that comes with that.
Yeah.
You're losing anyway, you're paying it out of your county property.
They will still get.
It's just like a charitable contribution.
They will still get safe tax relief, you just wouldn't be matching.
Matching the count.
Okay, so it's a, it's a safe program.
There's two cents.
And then if you cut out the freeze portion, you also are putting some money back in. But now, the, the freeze was put in for times like this, so that when you were hit the hardest, elderly and those people that are low-income are not hit with that higher income tax, I mean, that property tax.
What, what if somebody becomes terminally ill, God forbid, in one of these households, you know, where these property taxes being raised? You know, like I said, God forbid anything medically major wrong, how would that affect them?
Are you talking about being able to pay?
Yeah, I mean, just say somebody gets terminally ill and can't work, you know, and the household income is cut in half, how would that affect that?
It doesn't affect that, on the program, you have to be social security a disability, or those requirements have to be met. So that would not obtain, what, what would we do with those peoples we work with, and the county does not want your property. We collect property taxes at ninety-eight point five percent before they're turned over, so only one and a half percent is turned over to the courts. Okay, so we have a very low percentage then out of that, you maybe have court sales a year, I'm not seeking for Tommy, because Delahad, because he's not here, but you have very few court sales because of taxes. The county does not want your property at all. The last thing we want to say, you can go four years, if people usually have a court sale, I'm not, like I said, seeking for him, I just know the procedure, then you still have a year to, to redeem that property.
So that one person is hurt.
Do we, do we know what the fifty-nine cent projected?
What the?
The total number, that would be brought in?
How much extra, or how much?
How much would come out of that fifty-nine cents per the whole county's tax act? How much money would be generated?
Penny values, what, thirty-nine, six, somewhere, thirty-nine, I can't remember.
Fifty-nine, thirty, thirty-nine dollars.
This paper says it's thirty-eight, eight, sixty-eight.
Roughly thirty-nine dollars.
No, 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 don't ask me this question.
If we, if we pass this fifty-nine cents, how much is the county going to generate off all this? What's the total number?
From last year, this year, what's the increase?
What's the difference in the money we're going to generate?
Yes, it's two points.
Two point three, ref.
Yeah. What'd you say, thirty-eight, what, what'd you say, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, eight, sixty-eight was on the paper.
Two point two nine three million dollars, two point nine, two point two nine three two twelve.
I'm saying y'all are down on this problem. What are you putting in place to think you can pass it again?
We, we talked about that earlier, about looking, going forward, looking at our budgets, making sure that we're doing the right things with our budgets, watching our revenues monthly to, to amend budgets down throughout the year. If we see the revenues not matching what, what was, what it looks like it's going to be, then we will amend our budgets down. So you would, basically, you would cut your budget in the middle of the year if the revenues aren't matching. I talked about the, we talked about doing some different things with our purchasing stuff.
Generating some revenues.
Generating different revenues.
There's still no way to predict the future.
There's not.
If the factory closes.
Absolutely, yeah, God forbid, yeah.
We have the conversation, I mean, it's.
Right, and there's no new spending in that, I've told, and Eugene, maybe you won't throw a shoe at me when I say this again, or Jeff, there's, I mean, basically, there's, there's no, no new patrol cars, there's no new ambulances for two years. There's no raises for our county employees, there's no increasing our portion of the insurance on that, I mean, it's, it's bare bones, we've, we're cutting out, and, and, as I've said many times, we can't have nice things right now. This is where we are, and, and, and again, I reiterate, we cannot stand here and ask you to pay a hundred-dollar wheel tax, a fifty-dollar wheel tax, or a property tax, and expect to continue doing what we do. We can't do that, that's not fair.
Amen.
That's not fair. Correct. Right. Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely.
We met with Mr. Ben Rogers, he's on the C-Tech, County Tech Assist Program, or whatever. He recommends that the county have a surplus of around two hundred million dollars.
Not two hundred.
Two million dollars, I'm sorry.
Easy, easy there.
His recommendation was, you've got two million dollars in surplus, what is killing this county is, is when we're buying these patrol cars, we're financing them. When we buy ambulance, we financing or whatever, and we've had some notes in the past, as little as, where we borrowed two thousand dollars. He said the closing costs and the entrance is what's killing us. So we got to quit buying stuff if we don't have money to pay for it on, on the ground.
Absolutely, and that's, that's what we, what, that was one of the things that we see, we, we've got about two, now there's debts out there, there's a jail, there's other things, cap, big capital projects that were done. And so those things are still out there, that's got twenty, thirty years left on them, but we've got several smaller debts where we bought police cars, ambulances, CPR machines, stuff like that, stuff, capital equipment. So by not buying the new things this year, and not increasing that debt, and, and our debt service pays that off, hopefully within two years, that debt's gone. But part of this property tax, there's a nick, there's a nickel to that property tax that's going to go into what we're calling a capital projects fund, which will sit there and fund a nickel, which is basically two hundred thousand dollars a year. So it'll sit there and fund itself, so in two years, when we get back to the point, and we, we see that we have a need, we will have four hundred thousand dollars in cash that we can go write a check for any equipment that we need. Do what?
I mean, let's make some money with the money.
Well, I mean, it will, that's what, she just said, we, we, she does invest our money, the money that's sitting there not being spent is set in, in the interest-bearing account, so we are making some money on them. Right, so. But yeah, but if you, right, if you look at, if you look at the money that we're putting on debt right now, we could, we could, if we get rid of that, plus our capital projects, we'll be, we'll be to where we could pay cash for computer systems that need upgrading, and police cars and ambulances. And any, you know, anything like that, that we need to maintain the services that we currently do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, because you said want to hear from the citizens.
I do.
Give me my two cents.
Yes, ma'am, it's board.
Um, I, my husband and I are raising Peyton an extremely large family on a relatively small income.
Yes, you are.
Um, and so I have to be very careful with my personal budget.
Mm-hmm.
So the way I see it is, in my budget, when I have problems, I cut in small areas, and I increase in different areas, small.
Right.
And so if we cut things such as, and I, I know this can be really unpopular, but the donations, and, and I am on the board of one of those X donations. I, I think we need to cut the donations, and everybody should, the fitness center is a whole.
Agreed, we got, there's one that I can sell.
Being in the fitness center.
Absolutely.
The county has no business.
Agreed.
A possibility is increasing the, um, when people want to rent the accent, two hundred dollars a shot.
Erica and I are working on that right now, it's too cheap.
And I know, the, the, the.
And we're not.
The organization that I'm, I'm aboard of, I, I will be affected by that.
Yes, ma'am.
But the county needs what the county needs, can we not?
At least make it pay for itself, or at least offset some of the cost in maintaining it.
Do small sales and tax increases, a small property tax increase, a small wheel tax, I know we have this problem right now, that's got to take care of right now.
Absolutely.
But if we increase a lot of things, a little bit, it doesn't hurt us as bad, and if we cut even the small things, go with the budget, and find control, which it sounds like you're trying to do.
Yes, ma'am, we have been.
And I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate this meeting. I think that would be a little easier, um, to, for everybody to swallow than to do a huge income ta, uh, property tax increase that's so hard to deal with. Or the wheel tax, I can't out loud in my house, we have five vehicles, and, and my, my young adults, my, I have a sixteen-year-old daughter who's getting a job at a fast food joint, first thing on her list, a car. And I'm going to have to tell her, you're going to pay an extra hundred dollars a year on that, and, and I have two sons in the same situation. You know, it's just really a, really difficult thing in my family, to pay an extra five hundred dollars a year for the wheel income, in the wheel tax increase.
Right.
Or the property tax increase, we have a really big house, we're a really big family, that's an additional four, five hundred dollars a year for us. So it would just be easier for me to just do a little bit, all over the place, that huge chunks.
Agreed, I, I'm, I'm with you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One thing I want to say about the contributions, is there's one that I'm totally against cutting. Every year, the county commission donates thirty thousand dollars to the Smith County Rescue.
That's a completely different.
That's not on, that's not on the, that's not. It's not, that's.
It's not on the list, but it's still considered a donation.
It is, but it's not, I mean, it's on that list, and I've tried, I've tried to see if there's a way we can get that off there, there's.
Right, well, Erica and I, we talked a little bit about it, but that pays for their fuel, I mean, they're nonprofit.
Well, the rest of the supply should be a charitable donation, that's part of.
They get their money through roadblocks.
Basically, it's not, it's, it's in that donation because we give, we just basically block grant them thirty thousand dollars to do private services, and, and they don't have their separate budget line, we just, same way with the Chamber of Commerce, we appropriate money for that, so. Yes, ma'am.
I'll mention before, the action, it's honestly, it's more of a money gift than the, than the workout, like the fitness centers.
Right.
Last year it cost over ninety thousand dollars, and then we brought in twelve thousand.
Right.
That's, that's.
That's a big thing, yeah, and that's why we've got to.
So because we want to privatize that, and let them, whoever rents it, they're going to have to pay their own utilities and the, the custodial and the office supplies, and, and all that, and then we just get ready.
Not a bad, not a bad, silly, not a bad idea, not a bad idea.
And you not want pensions because, um, basically, everybody's saying, a lot of the county knows there's meetings, all the meetings are open.
They're, yeah, every, yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, in a week, yes, yes.
What was her suggestion, we didn't hear?
Uh, private, turning the ag center and that complex over to a private entity, and basically letting them run it, and make their money, and just pay us a lease. Kind of what we would want to do maybe with the fitness center as well, because I, I don't believe, you know, it, it's a cer- don't believe, you know, it, it's a cert, it's something that's provided for the citizens of this county is to be able to rent that for events and stuff, so.
One thing, kind of, if it's leased out to somebody, that person that's leasing is gonna push to make it work.
Absolutely.
And they gonna make more money that way.
Absolutely. Private sector's ten times better at making money than the government is. I mean, that's, that's, and, and, you know, and that's, that's where we face with that, with our fitness center. We're in that business right now, and, you know, and, and someone mentioned, you know, promoting it and trying to get, but I, I don't really believe as, as, I, I don't believe the government should be competing in the same marketplace as the private sector is doing. That's just.
So that isn't being utilized that much.
It's, yes, ma'am, it's used, you know, we, we draw some revenue out of it.
I know.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's used. Anybody, any other else?
If you're not aware of the county employees or raise, um, with the Latinx year vote, how are we going to keep those employees?
Great question.
I know, I know my sister works at the jail facility, and they talk about how hard it is to keep people now.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if we've got a hundred prisoners and three guards, I'm not gonna feel that satisfied.
Right. You're, I mean, it's a double-edged sword. So, I mean, you, 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 you give your people employee, you raises, ask, you know, because at the end of the day, every dollar that the government generates is our tax dollars. It's not, we're not selling a widget, we're not making a product, we're not growing a crop. We're, we're, the money we get comes from your pocket, my pocket, and everybody's sitting here in their pocket. That's how the government done. And, uh, it's a, I told someone yesterday, the government's kinda like a big hog at a feeding trough. It just sits there and eats, and you keep pouring slop buckets to it, and, and it's really, it's basically impossible to kill it or trim it.
We, we don't mind a raise, but forty thousand dollars in two years is a, a big raise.
I said they deserve something.
You know, several people could've got raises off of that.
Understand, but when that was, and I wasn't.
I know, it wasn't your fault.
Well, and, and I'll speak to it, I'll speak to what I know about it. That was based off of a recommendation by C Task when they did it across the state. That's exactly how everybody, when you go to that system.
Y'all, y'all better watch that. That, that can't happen. I mean, I don't mind raises, but that is way out of line. Way out of line.
Yes, sir.
I just, I got a question about that. Was that a raise, or was that a create?
It's a new position.
A new raise.
Yes, it was a new, new department, new position.
But was the person currently working for the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, was that position advertised? Of course, I know you're the new mayor, I'm just saying, is there no law that that job should've been advertised?
I wasn't, I.
You're talking about Director of Finings.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, that piece of paper, let me see, I might have to get my glasses. So one of the last questions on this piece of paper, y'all answered out, it states, our Director of Budgets and Finings, is this the Director of Finings?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that person located in your office?
They work under me, they're, yes.
You got the raise under your name?
Yes, ma'am.
And several other employees got raises as well.
But there were several people that were, they, they combined two, three, three departments? Solid Waste, Solid Waste, Road Department, and the rest of the general government came under one, one department.
But it still wasn't advertised?
I can't speak to that. I mean, I, I wasn't here that day, so I, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Does it have to be advertised? Do you know?
We, we would, if there was a position open, we would advertise it. Yes, ma'am. It would be first, first inside the government and then to the private. Yes, ma'am.
Is the Solid Waste Department still being run kinda like a business?
Yes, sir.
For getting trash from Murphy'sburg or wherever?
Yes, sir.
Is it making money?
It's, it's, it's making, it's holding its own.
Well, if we solid. Just, uh, it's big time. I would have had.
Okay, all right, so if we did that, and, and I, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm not against it, but I'm gonna run you this scenario, and, and you tell me, so we've, what, fifteen to twenty MBI trucks a day? Probably gonna triple that? You're gonna see blue trucks, or green trucks, or black trucks rolling in this county all day long. It's gonna be, you, I don't know, I don't know if you've ever been down there to, to Middle Point and watched that intersection there at Walter Hill, and just watched the trucks in and out?
And it goes back to what he said, our infrastructure is not.
Set up for that right now. Right.
Well, how, how your landfill got forty tons full?
Oh, long, I mean, there's still a lot of land out there. Now, the problem with it is it's, it takes a lot of money to expand it. I told somebody, and, and I'm, I'll give you this, uh, my, uh, my analogy of what I figured out pretty quick of the landfill. If I took a pi, piece of six-inch PVC pipe and cut it about yay-long, and I started sticking hundred-dollar bills in that PVC pipe, well, eventually, there's gonna be a hundred-dollar bills coming out the other side of that PVC pipe, but there's a whole bunch of PVC, a whole bunch of hundred-dollar bills inside that PVC pipe. So, yes, it's making money, but there's a lot of money tied up in it, so, yeah. And, 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 and let me state right now, that's not our problem today. Landfill did not, it had nothing to do with that. We're, it's holding its own, we've got, we're working on things to make it better and more profitable. That, that's a beast that's coming down the road that we'll have to address. And we, it may be the fact that we don't sell it, but we turn it over to somebody else to manage it, kinda like we talked about with the Ag Center.
Just, just Smith County's garbage and trash, how many years will it just, I mean, if you bring it in from the other counties and it, and it's full, then you got another problem looking for another landfill.
You can't, you couldn't put another landfill. You, you're just gonna keep expanding off that, yeah. Well, I mean.
You know, pretty soon it's gonna.
It's gonna, yeah, eventually it will fill up. Exactly. I, you know, and that, if we, at the current levels, we, that's, and I'm gonna speak right here, and, and, and don't hold me to this, we've probably got enough to last my lifetime in there, but our children, our grandchildren will, will face that problem down the road.
Nobody brings what's coming in.
And, and, and one thing I wanna mention about our tax money, there's not a taxpayer dollar goes in that landfill. You can, there's not a taxpayer dollar of, of your money. It's, it's funded by outside stuff. You can go to that convenience center, Old Pope's Hill, eight times a day, seven days a week, it does not cost you a taxpayer dollar, and we don't charge you for it. Now, I'm not sitting here telling you that there may not come a day that when we get to that point, that, that we may have to look at something like a user fee for our trash. I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna say that that will never happen.
Do, do they regulate? Do they regulate?
You're, you're exactly right. When you do that, they start dumping it outside the road again, so it's a.
He wanted to know that they regulate the trash.
Do what?
He wants to know that they regulate the types of trash that come in.
Yes, it is regulated. It is, it is C-one garbage trash that comes in. It is, it comes out of, most of it comes out of a transfer station in Sumner County. They bring it in, they sort it, and bring it to us, they just, the, the regular garbage trash, C-one trash.
Someone mentioned selling a landfill, well, there's two commissioners sitting back there that was only five years ago, so we was talking about selling this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, don't look around, Frank.
(laughing).
Nobody can tell you what that landfill's worth.
That's true.
And once you sell it, they don't want the convenience site.
No.
They won't, they'll, they'll, they'll.
Dump your trash, absolutely.
Once you sell it, you lose control of what goes in there.
It'll go from four hundred tons a day to probably fifteen hundred tons a day.
If you sell it, you bear the liability for like a thousand years.
Yeah, we're so responsible for it.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, they can tell you they're gonna take the liability, but if, at the end of the day, when they're done, they pitch the keys on the desk, and it'll be ours, 'cause it's in ours, and it's thirty years of maintaining, and we're, that's, right now, that, right now, our burden on that's, we were supposed to have six million dollars in the bank to take care of that, and by that time, it's gonna, it'll probably be triple that, 'cause that keeps going up, because regulations change and how that works, so. I feel like I've done all the talking. Anybody else wanna talk? Anything, any other questions while we're here? Yes, ma'am.
He was talking about the charitable contributions that you make. How many of those do you make, and who decides who makes those, and what are they going to?
They, they're, every year, they, over the past years, there's been several. Erica, have you got it?
That's the current list for this year.
The current list for this year that's been approved right now through the budget finance. That doesn't mean that the full commission will pass this, so this, I, uh, Smith County Pregnancy Help Center got five hundred dollars last year, gonna get five hundred this year. Family Resource, no, that's not, that don't show the decrease, doesn't. All right, Family Resource Network, which used to be Campus Life, is what they tell me, gets two thousand. The Veterans Honor Guard gets fifteen hundred. Now, that's one that I would, because that is to build, but it's a charity, so it's to build a, a veteran cemetery in Upper Coming. The Imagination Library gets a thousand dollars. Habitat for Humanity gets five thousand dollars. We give seven hundred dollars a year to the American Legion Boys and Girls State to send boys to, to send our people there, we, we share the cost of that. Uh, Backpack Program gets a thousand. Uh, there's a Smith County Senior Fair Day that get four hundred dollars. We give five hundred dollars to the Shriners. Emmanuel House gets ten thousand dollars. Relay for Life gets five hundred, and the Humane Society gets five thousand.
Jeff, I'd like to speak to that.
All right. I've added.
This got brought up in budget finance, I think, me and Frank's only ones, this year from budget finance. Um, it was, oh, Shannon, also Shannon, um, that, the list he read off equals about twenty-seven thousand. Well, that's not all of them. It has been being about forty thousand.
Right, we've cut some.
It's a little over a penny.
I thought I was going to say a hundred thousand, and I said, man, the churches, there's a hundred churches in this county with half a thousand dollars. I mean, that's a church function, not.
Now, uh, part of the hundred thousand is the Chamber of Commerce and the Rest of the Squad, what we were talking about earlier.
That are, that are in there, and I, Alex said, I like how that's done, because it makes it look like that's a charitable donation, and it's actually not, it's a block, I call it better a block grant that we give.
Forty thousand and some change of it is what's been happening. And it got brought up in a budget finance meeting, uh, there was a, a lot of discussion. There was a motion to cut them all fifty percent. No second.
No second.
I made the motion to cut them all one hundred percent.
No second.
No second. Motion to adjourn. The next meeting, it got brought up, and a few commissioners started going through some of them, and either suspending them, or reducing them, and picking and choosing. That's how we got from forty thousand to twenty-seven thousand. We don't need to be in the donating business to begin with, and we sure as crap don't need to be picking and choosing.
Take the donate when you're in the reg.
Exactly. So anyway, I'm almost one hundred percent, because if nobody else brings it up, I'm going to, on the floor of the twenty-fourth meeting, uh, or the meeting on the twenty-fourth, uh, it's gonna be brought up. Um, one of the huge chunks that's reduced from the forty thousand to the twenty-seven thousand is Smith County Heritage Museum. I'm on the board of the Smith County Heritage Museum, and, uh, I made the motion to reduce or to suspend the Smith County Heritage Museum. And I'll probably get kicked off of the board of the museum for cutting that, because it's seventy-five hundred dollars. That seventy-five hundred dollars keeps the doors open at the museum. I'm partial to the museum, but we can't be giving money away. And anyway, I made that motion to cut that seventy-five hundred dollars, it only passed four to three in budget. Um, so there's your big chunk, but, but anyway, it'll come up on the twenty-fourth, and that's a penny of our property tax, a little over a penny. Um, I mean, I'm a shrine, you know, there's five hundred dollars goes to shrine, but we can't be picking the shrine over the Backpack Program. We're either all in, or all out. And we need to be all out. That's all I'll say about that.
Well, I mean, I, we need to accept that.
And to under, and, and, and to Kobe's turn, you're, you're, exactly, you're picking and choosing, so if, if five hundred dollars for the Shriners, well, why not five hundred dollars for your charity? This, I mean, it, you, you, it's a slippery slope, and you go to, you're starting getting into really, really dangerous things. I mean, there, it went, when I came into this, there was a, there was a, a, a deal cut to build a concession stand at the fairgrounds that we were going, that the county government was gonna split with the Rotary Club, and I said, absolutely not. I said, number one, I don't have money, number two, that's not fair. So, I, I cut that down. Uh, we, just to tell you the stuff that we've cut this year that we didn't do, there was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintenance building, sheriff's training facility that was to be built behind the jail. Eugene and them needs the space, no doubt about it. Uh, we could do, we could do, we, we could do really good with that, uh, with, in getting out of Turner Gym with a maintenance building, but right now, we don't, we don't have the money to borrow, we don't need to be borrowing another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a building. Uh, there was a new maintenance truck for my department in there that, uh, had a snowplow on it, and I said, absolutely not, don't need it. If, if we need a snowplow, we'll shut the office down for a day or two. That's, and that's what I've done, and so, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I've tried to bring common sense and business sense to these citizens every day. I, I, and I do that every day. We look at everything, 'cause I, 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 y'all said it earlier, I wanna get out of trying to survive the day, you know? We've all been married and early, early on in your careers, and you, you talk about the young people, and you, you're just trying to survive the day and get to the next paycheck. I, I, I really wanna get us out of that position to where we can be looking five, ten, fifteen, twenty down the road for the stuff that's coming, that offsets some of this stuff, that's the good stuff, the, the growth and the, the, hopefully the jobs that'll come here. That's, that's what I wanna do, and I, that's what I have to do.
Do what? I, I, yes, sir.
And, and, and again, I, you know, we can sit here and, and blame and point fingers at the past all you want, and, and I, I, I don't wanna do that, because doing that don't add a, don't add a dime to my checkbook, so I gotta look for, I, I have to be doing what I gotta do, and that's working for the future.
And making sure it doesn't happen again.
And making sure, and absolutely making sure it does not happen again. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I have a question also.
Okay.
What I was gonna say today is, you know, I understand, and I'm not saying that all
and I'm not saying that all the charitable contributions should be cut or whatever, all of those were, were good things, all of them were.
Correct.
But one thing that I'm looking at, and, um, first I've talked to a lot of people that was with Starland, well, you know, they couldn't give any money, whatever, they had to go out, you know, they're trying to get these pets, you know, and stuff at home. But something that I've related to, and, and I really think that should be in Smith County, is an animal shelter. And I'm not saying bring on another cost or whatever, there's other things that can be done, uh, even roadblocks and stuff like that can be brought up with money, but you were saying that there was land that you couldn't use or you couldn't sell, because it was in a flood zone. Um, I'm fostering a dog right now that went up down the road for two, three days, you know, where my nephew was, and nobody wanted to find it. Well, when his wife started calling, every facility she called said, we can't help you. What's gonna happen to these animals and stuff, they're gonna be dumped, they're gonna be killed. I live in, I live right down the road here, and I go down here to Rock Ferry a lot, just to miss the water or whatever. There are numerous animals that I haven't been with. First, it, because it hurts my heart, and bought food for it and stuff down there, because they're being dumped there. Uh, there's gotta be a place for these animals and stuff to go. You know, and they're just, they're just being dumped, and there's nothing, and then you call people, and they're like, we can't help you. Well, then, what's gonna happen? You know, they're, they're running, they're starving, uh, and then everywhere you look, you know, you can't, there's assistance or anything for that. So, what, what is there something, what are they done about that? I mean, because especially if you've got land that's in a flood zone.
You know, I understand there's an issue.
It needs to be addressed, I mean, because there's just dogs running rampant, and nobody can find them at home, and people are dumped everywhere. You know, it's not their fault either.
No.
Here's, you know, what's, there's no resolution for that.
There is not.
Hudson County has one, Google has one, Wilson County has one, and here we're stuck, you know, and we have to work to tackle it, and if you can't tackle it, if you have a Smith County address, then you're able to tackle it. Second, we're gonna let you counter, or...
And, and I think you hit on it there, I mean, the, the, someone taking that on and, and, and raising the funds outside the government would be a great thing.
So, who'd they talk to about that, how'd they organize that, if they wanted to start something?
I think, I think the organization you mentioned started down that road, I mean, they, they got there, so... And I, I think it kinda fell off, it just disbanded, yeah. Right, maybe that, a model or something like that. We have the Humane Society that we are giving five thousand dollars. That money that goes to Humane Society goes for spay and neutering.
I believe that was fair of the...
Right.
But then, what, I mean, do they just spay and neuter, if they're not just...
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No. You know. I don't know if this is...
Spay and neuter thing? The spay and neuter thing? Or the adoptive thing? Yeah.
I, I...
Caro did something.
Absolutely. I said the other day...
And then we can help people, we can't help nobody, 'cause we can't help ourselves.
Absolutely, that's what I said the other day.
All of it, all the way across the board, shut it off. After we, after we gain to get healthy again, then we can help us do whatever we need.
As I said the other night, if I'm broke at home eating rice and beans, I don't care how bad Sally Struthers is on that tip commercial talking about giving money, I can't do it.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mind, you know, charitable organizations, but when we can't afford it, we've got to shut it off.
I said it earlier, we can't have nice things right now.
Yeah, I mean, and I hate to say that, I mean, I...
No, yeah, it's, it's, it's sad that that's where we are, but we, yeah.
If we get back where we can, then...
Then maybe we pick some up back? But we need to do that differently, we need to make sure that we're doing that, and we, we set aside an amount of money that we're going to give charitable donations, and then you make your business case, we don't just say...
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna live in a county that says, I ain't helping nobody.
What, right, and, and, and there may be an organization that you just disagree with, but your tax money's going to that organization, so, there has to be a, some, we have to do it, yes, ma'am.
The good thing about if, if we do cut out the charitable organizations is you, as an individual, can still donate to the charities that you believe in.
Absolutely.
And then your money's not going to charity, I mean, they're all great, you know, um, but, you know, what if someday there was some weird charity out there that came in, and it just wasn't something you agreed with? Your money would go to them just the same. So, if we cut it out, the individuals still have the opportunity to donate, and they do donate.
Yeah, that's...
Especially when you feel like you're not getting, like, your pocket picked on this side by the government as well.
Well, like you said, the, the volunteer fire department, I mean, that money should be there anyway.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's gotta be there, we have to, and listen, listen, here, here was something that I, that, that we were trying to push through this year to help, of course, we're not gonna get to, because it's, it's money, and, and Shannon is one of those. Shannon works day shift at Nissan, but Shannon goes home every afternoon, he's a volunteer fireman at Pleasant Shade. But also, Shannon is what we call a first responder. Those first responders and our rescue guys that'll go to these wrecks on Saturday, or, you know, leave at the middle of the night, that goes there, there's a bad wreck, he, he's coming from work, and he goes and, you know, revives your, your, your loved ones that, that's sick, and you get them there before the ambulance gets there, those guys don't make a dime.
That's a necessity, they need the money, I mean, 'cause they helped an ambulance.
And that's what I'm saying, that's the kinda things that, that the government should be, we should be doing when we get to that point, we're not there, so... And I, it breaks my heart that we can't do that right now, but we're not there, so... Uh, there is a public forum again next Thursday night, uh,
Six p.m.
Six p.m., jail and courthouse facilities, the full commission will be there, it will be handled, I think, basically as a regular...
Three, three minute limit speed.
Yeah, well, well, what we'll do is, well, it'll be a sign-in list, and we'll, we'll divide that based on how many people there are, how long we wanna be there. Uh, probably what we'll do is kinda, it'll be different than tonight, instead of getting, because if we start that down a dialogue, and you start asking questions, and we all start responding, it's, we'll be there till three o'clock in the morning, so, and I don't think any of you wanna do that. So, what we'll probably do is we'll do some type of orderly system where, like I said, if a hundred people puts their name on a list, wants to speak, we'll take two hours, divide that out by a hundred people, and determine how long you can speak, give you that time, put that timer on, let everybody speak, and at the end, then the county commission will have their, a chance, at that point in time, each one of those will have their chance to make a rebuttal at that time, to that, or say thank you, and yeah, you know, things that way. Because, like I said, if we don't put some kind of order and system to it, we'll be there till the next day, so... And which is fine, but I mean, it's, it's, you're, you're, I think if we do it in an orderly way, it'll be a really, it'll be a good thing. This has been great, this has been absolutely, I am so glad we got to do this, thank you, Erica, Ron, Shannon. I feel like I've held the mic and talked all night, and I don't know that that's what Erica had in mind, but, uh, you guys have asked a lot of great questions, you asked hard questions that we deserve, you, you deserve answers on. I hope we've answered them for you. If, if you need something, you contact me. If, if you got a question and I can't answer it, I'll get you an answer, I promise you that, that, I, I, I work for you guys.
What's gonna make the final decision, okay? Everybody came tonight, and nobody wants it, okay? We're gonna have this other meeting tomorrow, sure. Uh, nobody wants it again, and it's gonna go on and on.
It will come up, it will come to, it will come...
We don't, we're not gonna do what y'all want, we're gonna do just fifty-nine cents and pay some. Is that what boardless and gathering from all this, because...
What, what, what I, what I, here's what I, here's what I know, that it will, this fifty-nine cents will come up for a vote on June the twenty-fourth. And if twelve people vote for it, it will pass. If twelve people vote to not do it, we will basically, if we're done with the rest of our business, we will adjourn, and we will not recess and go in some rooms and twist arms, and I, I'll not, I'll not do that.
What twelve, the twelve that will be voting, what twelve?
Twelve hours, twenty-four.
Twelve, twelve out of twenty-four commis, twenty-three committees, twenty-three commissioners. Yes, sir.
So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven here, right?
I think that's right, yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be able to meet all of them, right?
Yes. They should all be there that night. It's at six o'clock at the, uh, jail and court facility. Do what? No, we're not doing that.
And if they don't have to, the state comes in and takes over?
Well, we'll come back and look at a different type of, I mean, we'll go back to, to a twenty-five cent budget and bring that back to a vote. At the end of the day, the county commission will vote and approve something, or they won't, or, or they won't, and the state will do it. That's, that's where we stand.
Well, I know there's one, two, three, four commissioners right here, I didn't, I hadn't heard anything of them. And I didn't know if I...
Mr. Ron?
Okay, I'd just like to say one thing, especially what the lady was saying down here about, you know, if, if this, this large property tax increase does take place, I wanna see something put in place immediately to maybe have the real tax drawn in as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
If we're gonna pass this.
Absolutely.
And, and if it's, if it's possible, maybe, uh, vote up or have something, a resolution.
There's nothing that says we can't pass it two-thirds majority and roll the dice that it, that we don't get petitioned.
To maybe have it set to end next year.
And we just, yeah.
Now, this gentleman right here speaking right now, I don't know his name, but he's making a lot of sense.
He is, he is.
That's a lot of good comment, and I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, and Erica, she gets all the credit for, she set all this up.
She did. Yes, sir.
You've got a, y'all got a heavy task, I think all the other commissioners are doing the right thing. I would just like to say though, that we can do some research on this, we're not the county that's been in this mess.
No, sure. Every morning on...
Money went down just a few years ago, and had a six dollar and some cent property tax imposed on them by the state. I'm not trying to get us in a panic, but you can do research on this and find out what the options are.
We can't, we, we can't not act.
Well, I think, you know, I think what's happened here, you know, this is, this hasn't happened overnight, right?
And we're not gonna get out of it overnight.
What it is, you know, what's happened back, I don't think anyone was informed about nothing, what was going on, and now it's just shoved down our throats, and it's hard to swallow.
It is hard to swallow, yes, sir, I agree with you.
A few, uh, Mr. Mason, I, I know that...
Absolutely, I'm with you.
This gentleman over here made a, made a good point.
He did.
If we can stretch it out here a little bit, I think it's letting you set some money, and not just have everything worse then. I can give y'all opportunity, y'all, y'all thinking that, uh, you wanna build this city? You know, I'm, uh, we came here in ninety-nine, I'll be here in twenty years now, and it's seen that much progress in progress.
Absolutely.
I've seen it from Budson, Wilson, I've seen it from Budson.
It's our turn.
So, if I can give y'all opportunity for three or four years or whatever, to build this community up, make some more revenue, bring this us down, hey, I'm on board. Split it up a little bit.
Why you guys, for the day, and anyhow, especially for the three that represent me, are doing what you are doing, I have no idea, shut off in the muck. And all I ask you to do is do the right thing, you got the word on your shoulders now.
That's what we'll do.
Let's do the right thing, get out of this mess.
Absolutely. That's, that's, and, and, and they do it because they care about their community, so, so, you know, somebody said earlier about, you know, and everybody said, don't, don't, don't feel sorry for me, I worked hard for this job, I knew there'd be big decisions, there'd be dark days.
I'm talking for you.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hey, everybody, no, I'm just kidding. But, no, I, I'll say, I love my job. I've been here forty-seven years of my life, I've born and raised here, there ain't a better place in the world than Fifth County, Tennessee. I'm not in this for the power, I ain't in it for the glory, I mean, I, I know, I know that this right here could possibly, in three years, cost me my job, I understand that, but I can't make decisions based on that anymore, we, we can't do it.
But everybody needs to understand, this happened not under your watch.
I will be judged on how we fix it. And that, and I value, we will, and I...
And that's not where you mess up.
That's right. Outside of floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes that I can't control, the good Lord does, we will, we will change the way we do things in this county.
It ain't just ten, about half of the commission's news.
Correct.
As of last year.
I guess you'd be reelected in March?
No, it's August. You get to August.
Oh, well, August. So, you're gonna be on short rope.
You better show them proof quick.
Well, you know, most of the, most of the citizens of Smith County don't see what y'all...
No, they don't.
I mean, we...
But we want you to.
Well, I don't, well, I don't know if I know any of them, I mean, it's, uh, you know...
Yeah.
But you know what they do see? They see what's on social media and what's in the paper.
That's right. Well, and, and I'll brag on...
That's not all of it.
I'll brag on Shannon, Shannon, when Shannon made his speech that night before the commission to be elected, be appointed, to fill that term, Shannon said, I, for years, you know, he said, I decided I could be part of the problem and stand out here and complain, or I could jump in and be part of the solution, and, and I commend Shannon for, 'cause he got threw into the, your first, first two meetings was telling him.
Yeah.
But, but that's, you know, that's okay, we feel sorry for us, we worked hard for these jobs and wanted them, so, that's, uh, that's, and it's our job to do this, so, yes, sir.
I think part of the transparency is our responsibility.
Ask the question.
These meetings are public, they're open, and if you really wanna know what's going on, go to the meeting, listen, put your input.
Absolutely.
You can't sit and own like you say, counting on Facebook to tell you what's going on.
Absolutely. It's, yeah, ask, I don't have, if, I, I spend a lot of time in the office, but I spend a lot of time out in the office, and I try to be out, you know, I go to conferences, I go, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the best way to market this county and the infrastructure needs that we can do and get, so I go to conferences, I go to meetings all over the state, uh, just to gain that knowledge and to meet those people, meet those... That's the thing about this economic development, there's a, there's a team in place with the state in our Tennessee Central and Hartsfield, that, that, they work hard, that, we're marketing this place every day. Now, we will turn that up, keep turning that up, and, and, and like you said, if, if, if we can get, we turned in, it's a slow process, we're turning in RFPs for people that's looking to move here every week, but that may be a year down the road prospect, so, but we're, but we're, we're actively going after those things. We, we met with a guy this week that maybe he's gonna do some, maybe a new development in, in town, and, and that's exciting, and that's, I think that, it's one of those things, and I'm not gonna talk about it, because I don't wanna share it and get it out there yet, but it's, it's something that could provide that spark, I believe.
One thing, I appreciate your comment on that. I've been on the county commission for over twelve years. I've seen as little as three citizens show up at a county commission meeting. A majority are the people that are there, there's Steve Cobble, Leanne Williams, some of the elected officials, Mr. Roberts, Eugene Roberts, the sheriff's always there, and outside of that, I mean, people from eight districts in this county, with a population of over twenty thousand people, nobody don't wanna show up to a meeting and, or anything like that.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How are y'all presenting the meetings, are y'all sending out any kinda information?
They're pub, they're published in the Carthage Courier.
In the Carthage Courier?
Yeah.
If you don't get...
Smith County Insider does some, I try to put them on my Facebook page when I know them.
Don't get Facebook.
We, we meet every other month.
Every other, every other month.
Every other month, second Monday night, at seven o'clock, at the jail and court. Except, for, except, we have three, except, for the budget reason, we have three consecutive meetings, May, June, July, to try to get the budget passing.
Absolutely.
But after that, the July meeting, the next one will be September, then November, then January, then February, no, March, and like that, so, that's when we meet.
The most, the most heavily attended county commission meeting, I used to have a question.
Tax increase.
That ever was, was over thirty years ago, and the topic was trophy trout regulations on the County Fork River. That brought more angry people to that meeting than any meeting I've ever, that I've ever in attendance.
That's interesting.
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, like you said, um, you know, being informed is part of it too, so, um, if you guys can still come out to the next Thursday, um, at six o'clock at the jail and courthouse facility.
On the Smith County website, on the Smith County, Smith County TN dot com?
Smith County TN dot gov.
Smith County TN dot gov, fire commissioner, call, express your voice.